Access would be a minimum improvement. It would just be to get equipment through our primary equipment would be facing Mission Street. Our secondary equipment would be facing the back. And we would have three bays, but six stalls. So we have the ability to have a water tender. If we ever had the need to have a ladder truck, it would fit in that building, which would change the dynamic of the district greatly because then we could do two-story destruction. We're limited to two-story destruction because we don't have the apparatus to support it. So there's just a couple of photos of basic buildings. This, I almost swear to you, is Two Stone Fire Department.
Remind me why in our discussion last week that that wasn't a good idea, which...
Well, let me finish that road. So we build the apparatus bay and then do an entire remodel of this space of the interior. Maintain a good portion of the side beyond Gridloin, too. But the interior remodel would consist of more than likely having a larger sheriff's office in the front. The apparatus bay doors would go away. We would infill in the storefront to match what's existing. And perhaps have a larger meeting room in the corner somewhere. Provide housing on the first floor for fire department staff, a regular kitchen, a dining area. Utilize the upstairs as best we could for either additional living space or storage. We have to have servering, we have to have secure files, things of that nature. Your basic equipment needs. So that would be, you know, as far as coming up with something in a couple of weeks, that's what we're able to come up with. Now, obviously, if we're going to move forward with the master plan for the fire department, we can take this to our consultant and say, "What do you think?" They can say, "Well, you're that crazy," or, "This makes sense."
Last week or last month in the other meeting, when you asked about why was it that good plan? I can say it wasn't a good plan, it just wasn't proposed in a manner because this is being proposed and it was most cost-effective. The plan we're talking about would require building, street curving, gutter remodeling here. And if that were a choice versus...
That's a big...
That, this is more expensive. So just adding office space with this one for the next five, maybe 10 years, it was additional 1,300 square feet for the offices. So the cost of it is far cheaper and would come a lot sooner than if we tried to do the other project here.
These are ideas that are solely for the fire department. They do not incorporate the CSDs with the exception of perhaps having the ability to drop the bills off. That's still a necessity.
Have we come up with any kind of a plan on how to keep traffic out of the neighborhood at this new location?
Well, there are a couple things. One, there's the, the drop box will remain here.
So drop bills would, they could be right here, right across the street. But we don't accept cash and they want to pay cash.
And the other part, implementing the CHC program and promoting it, educating the public, would probably cut a very another large percentage. To say we could cut 100% of all the traffic that would go down there is probably not realistic. But I think being in that traffic would be between 8:00 and 4:30 here on a weekday. And that you're doing everything, we can minimize it. I don't see it being as big of an impact as it sounds because currently, for people that are coming in here, a majority of them would take on the CHC and...
ACH.
Or ACH. We'll have to go to CHC after the ACH. But people that's still using cash today will continue to use cash.
Well, I can tell you that it's not feasible to not take cash. I, the demographic of this town, there has to be certain times of the month. And I'm not saying all month long, but there needs to be certain times of the month. I figure a lot of that...
And that was the other thing, we keep, we keep the front reception area where it can be used to... It doesn't have to be every day, Monday through Friday, but key days.
No, we could definitely steal back our hours, but...
And that, then we could eliminate the high-traffic periods away from there.
Can we eliminate taking cash at that facility? And if you want to pay cash, you have to come here on those certain days.
Yeah, I think that would be doable, which is right now, and I have a couple...
So that means you wouldn't have any...
$10,000 cash deposits this time of the month.
It seems a little, it seems like a lot to ask for somebody, "Oh, I'm going to pay cash, I can only come on Monday." And you're, you're going to have, probably, you're probably going to have a year or maybe two years of trying to get people trained into coming here right now.
I completely agree with that. That's, that's why I want to somehow try to figure out a way...
The ACH should kind of cut it off.
How about if you leave the billing up here? You leave two people up here for billing. And you move the sheriff's substation down over there. Would that avoid the traffic?
That's not an idea. I would also have, the only thing I'd have to say is that would be up to, does the sheriff department want to be on Mission Street? Would they be comfortable in an office over there for a bathroom office?
Right. Do you think they're going to come here and just sit in that little box?
No, but they use it for filling out paperwork. Yeah, and they, computer reports, bathroom break, lunch break.
And they did, they did it at the school years ago, right?
It's very good.
Huh? Did they, did they ever, they never used it? Do they use it now?
Yeah, they gotta go through it. Yeah, I think though, what I was told by the deputies where they gotta go through a lock gate, a locked door, unset an alarm, and go through a second door. So now if they got to leave, we gotta lock a door, set an alarm, lock a door.
We could accommodate that, we're going to do the same thing here, believe me.
Well, we can, we can accommodate pretty much anywhere. Like, the, my concern, two concerns of leaving somebody here just to take payments is number one, now you have, essentially have to have an office over there for those people, have to have an office here for those people, so they're duplicating the space. Yes, it's more convenient for people to come pay here because that's what they're used to. They're, you know, everybody's used to something until it changes, and then they get used to that, and then they don't care about that. So I'm sympathetic to the traffic on Bonita, the traffic on In Street, 16th Street, 15th Street, 14th Street. But the...
Have we reached out to them yet?
We haven't, we've reached out to the HOA, we're trying to get them to even call us back. I don't think the guys are very friendly.
Who?
The guy from the HOA. I would talk to everybody along Bonita or 15th, 16th or whatever.
Well, you contacted him and he hasn't replied to you?
It's not the same person that was on the board, was it?
Well, they had a little bit of a hiccup because they still had Travis Dawes' information on there. And he wasn't so happy about everybody calling him about the HOA, not just us, but everybody in general. So we've straightened that out, we have the right person now. So we're just waiting for him to contact us or talk to the property management group and we're helping a little bit.
I think when you were saying that it was a horrible idea last, last meeting, but now it's a better idea. We had two different scopes of work, and one of them was to extend this building and then incorporate the CSD offices and the fire department into a building and extend this building. What I'm proposing or what we're talking about currently for the 20-year plan is just a standalone apparatus bay. It has no accommodations for housing. The utilities are very limited.
Yeah, no, he and I discussed that completely. And then at the last meeting, I was like, "I wonder why is that not a good idea all of a sudden?" Because...
Well, the only reason was...
When it was presented to me, I thought it was a good idea.
Right, and we still think it is, but it comes with a higher cost.
I understand, I understand. And if we get the easement, if we get the easement and the railroad down there, then a lot of this goes away. And then we can really focus on this building.
And you paving between the houses and the railroad? Well, access to the wastewater plant?
At the end of In Street?
It's not going to be like a million dollars of pavement?
No.
These are... The one thing also, though, about the property that's north of our plant is that's currently concerned landlocked because there is no railroad access. And by having this access, that property will become unlandlocked. And as Director Singsun mentioned earlier about us controlling land use, the land use and the growth of this town will actually depend partly on whether that road gets built or not. And that's in the extended, or reserve mine area for future housing.
So in that wood, which is?
The, that vineyard that's north of our reserve mine is, was extended through a big old fight that Laverne and a couple other people had with the Camero, trying to get that area extended. So if we get that road, I'm pretty sure Gallo, whoever owns it, may be wanting to pay for the paving costs so that property isn't landlocked. Because they did, because you said also at one point that they will, they wanted to work with us to have that happen.
They want to work with us to grade the road. I don't know that they're interested in paving.
They're trying to get out of costs just like we're at greater. Not to share the cost asphalt.
So, so basically, we have generalized costs in there, and these are generally the general ones. So...
I can see where you're sorry.
Basically, the improvements that would be needed on Bonita, the access from Bonita, the improvements that would be needed along the access easement through In Street are basically looking at almost a $480,000 difference. So that in itself is not a huge cost considering the, the cost of the treatment plant. However, we are going to come to a point soon where we need to kind of figure out which way we were going to go in general. But, you know, the, the biggest problem with going down In Street is all of the improvements that are needed. You need the road, you need light, you need other water...
Fence, which is coming over the road, right?
You need the fence. You need to educate the people in Mission Meadows that they can't use the rarities and have their own personal storage here. You have access control issues. So it's, it's not just paving a road. It's not like we can just go out there and paper it, pave it. I'm not totally opposed to that idea, it's just that...
We just, a truckload of employees just showed up for December 21st.
A truckload of employees, your five-minute?
No, I got them on it, but I think he's saying thank you and that stuff, so. Didn't want to leave you guys in the dark, some weird song on.
So it is a plausible, plausible option, which is obviously a cost. Those are pretty conservative numbers, so they need to be conservative. All at the same time, they're most likely witchy conservatives. That doesn't take into account any permitting if we just acquire a larger easement from the railroad. That doesn't account, account for us buying the property if we buy that property instead of getting the long-term easement. Right now, we're investigating both just upgrading the easement and buying the property from the railroad and seeing what their, what their overall interest is. I mean, our interest overall, it would be better off if we just wanted it. But if the cost to do that is outrageous, then that's obviously not on the table.
I have one other dumb question involving that. If that road does go through, are they going to knock out that wall and connect Benedict Street? I was looking at Google Images, and I guess there's a access point? Something about where a driveway goes that would connect to that road? Because, but, I look at these dumb things all the time and go, "Who, who planned this?" You know, but...
There was a driveway down there a long time ago.
Ooh, hell's love. Blacksmith lived there.
So, you know, that, that's something that's, it's possible. That would be something that the county would be involved in and if...
What that means?
We make all kinds of decisions here.
Good, then we can call this meeting.
Yes.
It looks like the railroad owns actually owns the property for the railroad tracks itself and then owns a separate property. It's two separate blocks there.
The one that our easement is on is the one that's directly abiding Mission Meadows.
Right, yeah.
So if we were, if we were to buy that property, we wouldn't go out of the way to connect Benedict, Benedict to that. If you know you wanted to buy the property from us and make that a road, then that's up to them. It's not likely that block wall is part of a sound wall. So they wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily be able to kind of hold it up.
Public comment?
That's been a right-of-way for years. I used to go down to the Hog Farm, there was a blacksmith lived down there. And that road been a right-of-way to our sewer ponds because that's a new road we put in off of Bonita.
It's a map easement?
Should be, because it's been an easement since I was a kid. That's 70-some years.
We have an easement agreement for that property as an access for us to get to.
And we have a right to improve and maintain an easement.
I don't know if you have a right, but talk to the railroad first, we have a runway through there.
It's an easement.
There's a water line running down the edge of that.
We have a, we have an easement agreement for that property. The question is whether or not that easement agreement says we could have anybody and everybody coming down there or we can have our district down.
District use?
Because Gallo also has an easement there for their char団 traffic. Not, not the general public. And that's, that's the difference.
I see. Well, then we'd have to look into that.
So that's why I've been saying either we upgrade our easement or we buy that property. So if we upgrade the easement, then it would be for the general public, which has different requirements than we have. Right now, we have locked gates and low bins because that's our requirement is to keep the public out.
I see, okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
One is just a curiosity of wondering if there's any other community anywhere that has CSD headquarters, main office at sewer pond?
There's one in this county, technically, and that would be Erby's Ranch. Because it's on the same property, even though their super plan is right behind it. They're the only one. One else is in a downtown or off the subway.
Sure, they're, they're an unusual... That's really not a good comparison, though, because they're a gated community. They're completely different from that.
But he was asking, so that was, I love.
My, my other question, though, is about the cost of the building. It probably was mentioned and I missed it, but Kelly, is the grant paying for the cost of the building when you're building there? Or is that going to be something that's going to be payments to pay off or...
So right now, we only have grants for the design, to get to finished construction drawings. But money we're applying from the county, the money that we're applying from USDA and from SRF would all go towards the construction. So everything...
Construction of the entire facility, including the buildings?
Of the entire facility, including the buildings. Would all be either grants or grant loans or loans.
Well, okay, but can you, are they broken out?
Well, we don't have them yet, so I can't tell you yet.
Okay, so there's a chance that that building could be 100% on our dime?
There's a chance this entire facility could be 100%, 100% on our dime.
So let's start our master plan today.
Which, which that would mean more increases in fees? Is that true?
Well, depending on what the, the final dollar amount comes down to. It could mean additional increases if we...
Another 218?
Well, we have to have another 218 to continue anything. So after five years, the 218 that we have approved and that we're following expires.
Right, the rates don't expire.
Well, the rates don't expire. So in five years, that rate that's at five years, you could not ever increase it again, and it could go on forever like that. But you can't increase it.
No, no, I understand that. Would the, would the district survive on those rates?
I can't tell you that right now. Right now, the, the rates that are, have been implemented are based on that treatment plant costing 6 to 7 million and us paying at least a 50% loan on that.
At least, but as much as?
So at least 50%, so, you know, you'd already have money. But, you know, and we could have more, which means that when we do the next rate study, it may say that we need to increase it a little bit more.
So Kelly, the money that is scheduled to be coming in, does that have any impact on making a payment of loan or that sort, or that was not considered?
Now, that's part of the rates. Part of the rate is built in the loan payment. So we have two things that were built in the rates. The loan payment of roughly $250,000 to $300,000 a year and a maintenance set aside of $100,000 a year for the long-term maintenance of that plant. Theoretically, in 10 years, the membranes would have to be replaced. We're estimating that it's going to cost a million dollars in 10 years. But that's if we had it built out to the full size by...
Say that again?
So part of this process involves membranes, which are little tubes smaller than the size of the... They wear out and they have to be replaced. So based on other plans of similar size, they schedule a million dollars every 10 years to replace those membranes.
So $100,000 a year.
So we're setting aside, and we've budgeted through the rate study and our budget, we're budgeting $100,000 a year, every year, so that we have money set aside. So it's not a big surprise and it's not a big, oh my God, we don't have money to replace these membranes. That's assuming that in 10 years, it actually does cost a million dollars. Most likely, if we're doing it in phases like we're projecting, in 10 years, we might only be at half-capacity, which means that it only, it might only be $400,000 or $500,000, which means we'd have an extra $500,000 city. As we develop through this plan and as we develop through our actual maintenance costs, it's possible that that $500,000 savings can be put back into payments and reduce our overall debt or reduce the amount that may have actually had to happen if we didn't have that extra money to offset rates.
Or is it possible that it would be more than a million in that timeframe? When you have to replace it, would it cost more than that?
10 years down the road?
I mean, it's, it's possible. The million was on the high side for a different system that costs considerably more than what we have.
Okay.
I would say if anything, these technologies are on their way downward in price because the technology is better and better. And it has, RO, reverse loss wells is the perfect example. The membranes were extremely expensive 20 years ago, and they weren't as good as they are today. They're cheaper and they're better today. And I think the membrane technology, I think it would be safe to say that they're going to go in that direction as well.
Yeah.
Well, that's good news. So then, other than the cost of inflation, what would be the difference in our waiting to build this building?
Well, the problem is you need the majority of that building when the plant comes online. So it's possible that we could say, "That's the building we want." We build the shell, build out what we need, and then leave the rest for the future. The issue there is instead of having a contractor who's already there building that and paying $200,000, $300,000 more to build out the rest of it, now you're paying them to come back at an inflated rate to build the same thing.
Because of inflation, inflated rate raise.
And if you're paying somebody to come back, you're basically starting over. So that, that what would be $300,000...
It's a rework, it's new construction.
Yeah, you lose your economy of scale, is what happens.
It's what?
You lose your economy of scale. If you have a bigger scale project, you do it all at once, you're going to get it for a lower rate. Now, if you start piecemeal, it's going to cost you more and more and more. So the economy is scaled.
Okay, so the more, more homes that get built in town as compared to the terrace, the better chances there are of paying for that because the terrace is not on the, in the sewer system.
Not for now.
Yeah.
But if you get a large housing tract, I mean, you have a 38-house and a 38-use unit housing tract going in or going for planning right now. But there's a lot of large property there that people are interested in developing. If they develop that, then they're not going to be able to put hundreds of homes on septic. It's going to be either a package plant or they're going to have to pump it back to this plant.
It'd be cheaper for them to have a, have their own plant up there at that point?
Depending on exactly where it is, it would be cheaper to have a package plant. But you still have to have somewhere for the effluent to go.
Right.
So at some point...
But 38 homes, you could put in the guy, I mean, they let, if those, are they planning on putting a water maker?
38 homes are on septic. My comment was that if they build some of these other tracts, there's other properties, whether it's considering hundreds of homes, you're not going to be able to get each one on an acre or more. So...
Does the district have any say in terms of septic systems that are not allowed or allowed?
We can't deny them if we don't have service to that area. If they're building on an acre or more, we can't deny...
That's county land.
Because I heard a couple of years ago now that the state was going to start limiting the ability of people to put in septic systems unless they had a large acreage.
The biggest issue is there's a lot of areas where lots are half-acre or, you know, even in town, we have lots that are 4,000 square feet, 5,000 square feet that have septic. The, the issue, and I think what the state is trying to mitigate, is the high-density housing with septic. You have a high-density septic effluent going into the ground, which artificially increases all of the pollutants in the ground, which affects the groundwater.
No more Los Osos files, see?
So in this county at least, if you have, if you're not in an area that has sewer, you can put in, put in septic still. But they're generally not allowing high-density housing in those areas. If you're on an acre or more, you can have septic as long as there's no community sewer.
Okay, is there any other public comment?
Is this building, is it custom? I don't know if it was customizable, but if we are still using that facility and we need to add on office space, is that like feasible under this type of construct here? And what does that look like?
So this would be a metal building, similar to this building. So the shell would be predominantly the same. But you could remodel the inside to be essentially whatever it's long.
And use cubicles if you want, if you...
You could make, yeah, a giant space and have cubicles.
Could we make the building longer?
Pardon me?
Could we make the building longer if we needed more space there?
Yeah, you could add bays. And you could, you could even develop off of the long sides. But, you know, how you do that costs more. If you wanted to make it longer and add bays lengthwise, then that's the cheapest way to go.
Is there space? Is there going to be space around?
Depends on where it ends up. If it ends up over pond two or if it ends up over pond one, depending on where the access is. There is space to make it bigger. We can plan for space to make it bigger. That's not a, that's not a big deal.
I think that it would just be a smart thing to be able to plan on, in case it was still down there, using that facility and we actually expand the space or not, you know, out of luck. That's just kind of, you don't want to, is it huge or small or something? I think it is, or get yourself stuck in a predicament. Which pond, though? Is it, is it there, though, for expansion under the existing location or the other location? Which one is there going to be, are we going to constrain if we go?
If you move it into the corner, I would imagine you won't have as much space to expand it.
Well, the issue with moving it to a corner is then you basically are building a building in a corner next to a pond. So more likely, if that was the case, then we would fill in both ponds and you would have the space of both ponds. So if the, if that was the case and we came in off of that access easement and we moved the building over, we'd probably fill in both ponds. You would have more open space, which would lead to more space for expansion if you needed to expand.
Those ponds are going to be treated or semi-treated water? I can't remember now.
The, the pond...
How would it affect the headworks?
The pond in the corner was theoretically going to be effluent or effluent from Gallo.
Okay, that's right, I remember.
The other two that are north of that were going to be treated holding ponds, so treated recycled water.
That's right, all right. So it wouldn't affect the headworks at all?
So it's not going to affect the headworks. The, the only ponds that really affect the headworks are the ones that are red. So those ones have to be where they are, more or less. One of the options that we're investigating, pending response from the railroad, is if we were able to acquire that property to the east of us, I mean, to the west of us, which is currently a rare easement, then we can move all of the treatment processes to the north and out of the lower area, which would give us more options as far as holding ponds.
Gravity.
Gravity.
And still using the same access points, whatever that ends up being?
Um, yeah, the two options for any access to the plant would still be the same. It would just be a matter of where the actual, the big red block on the right side, it would be up just to the left of the, the six red ponds. And that would also partially mitigate some of Gibbs' concerns about the odors. Putting it farther north, they would, you know, almost all of the smell would blow out over the river.
So if the railroad says, says we're golden, then we can reconfigure and we'll actually have some more benefits out of that plant.
But then there's the cost of...
Right.
Improvement.
Well, the, the improvements that would be needed where the process of the treatment processes are now would be essentially the same improvements that would be needed if it was moved.
Yeah, yeah, no, but I'm talking about the additional cost to pay for the easement.
But in that, in that respect, if we, if we did acquire the easement or the property just to the, the left of our property where those red ponds are, then that's an instance where we... then that's an instance where we may be able to get Gallo to help pay for part of the improvements going across that property to their property. Especially if they were able to get some sort of a financial benefit by using it more predominantly for their traffic. And if there was some agreement from Gallo to stop using that at great crossing, then maybe the railroad would be more willing to, to give up that property.
Give up the property, help any way they can. Cause how many high-grade crossings does Gallo have across that problem, do we know?
Well, they have one, but they actually can have five.
Five?
But they, you know, that chance that the railroad gives them.
Yeah, the railroad supposedly won't give you another access unless you're willing to give up one. And if they gave that one up to another community, that would be a good thing.
Yeah, but how, how do you accommodate a, a, a community that quadruples in population in the time that they gave you two, and now you need five? I mean, I don't see how they could. I don't think they care. I'm sure they don't, but.
We used to have three, we used to do one down on Sixth St. Street.
Right, what happened?
You took it away.
All done. She's never doing that, where were you that day?
I got the railroad ties.
That's where he was.
Well, is there any, anybody wanna make a proposal to direct staff in a way?
Do we also wanna talk about, since we're doing this, about the three concepts? The fire station is here, do you want, since I saw this thing?
Is the, these?
Yeah, it's that.
That's, I'm asking, I'm asking, is it, do we wanna make proposals to direct staff?
I think you need to go to Scottsdale and talk about getting consultant in there, so you guys can make the right decision, so you know where you're at.
Well, first you have to have, you have to have a plan.
Well, you gotta lay it out to them, and they're gonna tell you what you want.
I, so far, what I wrote down that you get to talk about earlier was you wanna see an overall master plan for the immediate needs. You wanna see an overall master plan for each department individually as well, so. There's a lot there for us to provide to you guys for just.
Right, but each one, this is more directly, we need to figure out, well, I guess it's not.
Yeah, well, the, the true master plan will have immediate needs, but also emergent needs. That's really the object. So these, if we collectively deciding that putting the district office system to the wastewater treatment plant building is the best idea, the most cost-effective, whether we choose that, that's the idea, then we really need to kind of take these three options to heart as to what to do with this building. It exists, it's here, so how do we maximize the use of space to best benefit the district and the staff that would be occupying this building? So they're really two entirely different processes.